...of the Waterloo Community School District to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and will you please rise and repeat the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next, our mission statement will be read this evening by Lyle Schmidt.
The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thanks, Lyle. The first item on our agenda this evening is item A on page one, and it is the donation of an art mural from Pointer Elementary. And I know that we have Laura Martin here this evening, and I see some students, some anxious students who can't wait to come up here and tell me about what's going on.
Yay!
Yay! And you guys, there's a microphone on that podium right there, and if you touch the little button that says "push," a green light will come on, and you may be able to pull it a little bit so we can hear you.
Okay.
That is so cool.
Well, my husband and I were at an auction for the volunteers of Cedar Falls. We paired, we, at the dinner, this mural was up behind us. It was made by the art students of Pointer Elementary. This Ellen Vanderloo had been in charge of decorating the table for Waterloo, and she was using the theme of global thinking and different cultures around the world because Waterloo represents quite a few of the cultures. And I just thought this was an appropriate picture to buy. I had to buy it because, well, it was Pointer Elementary, since I worked there.
Right!
So the Pointer students and staff would like to present the school board with this mural so that you guys can have it and put it up here so you can remember that we're a diverse population in school.
That's wonderful. Thank you, guys.
And now that you've got that adjusted perfectly, can we hear your student names and if you helped create that mural?
Will you introduce yourselves, you guys? Please. Do you want me to come hold that?
Sure!
Sure! What can I get?
That's awesome.
I'm happy to hold it.
You can move the mic down, yeah?
My name is Kane.
What grade are you in?
I'm in second.
Kane, did you work on this?
Yeah.
Awesome. Did you do one of these little people around the edge?
Uh, yes.
Do you want to point out which one?
Uh...
Can you see it? Rotate it, Chadwick, can't see the box.
Alright.
Hey, good job!
Just introduce yourself and how, what grade you're in.
Mine is Elena, and I'm in third grade.
And did you do one of these also?
Yeah.
Do you want to show me which one? I know I'm actually the best job holder in this school.
You can even ban her, I don't know.
Oh, look, you got a hula! Alright, one more.
My name is Brooklyn, and I'm in second grade.
And did you do one of these also?
Yeah.
Show me this one. Watch this one. Can you see? Let's put you on the spot. It's right up here in the carpet.
At Pointer, all of our kids have got different jobs, and these are three of our art leaders, so that's their job. They helped make the earth and decorate the earth, and it was actually in one of our music programs. And then they helped decorate the... Yeah, it was either a fourth or fifth grade music program, and then they helped decorate the people around the sides.
Alright.
We'll be gratefully accept this, thank you very much for bringing it. And I'm not sure I'm gonna hang it right this minute, but we're gonna find a good spot for it down here. So, thank you very much.
Good work, guys.
Yeah.
Art leaders.
They sense, they are, that's good. They're art leaders.
Ask Marty if I can put tape on this wood.
Thanks, you guys. I really appreciate that. And I'm not very good at being Vanna White, so forgive me. Before we go any further this evening, though, I do have one slight adjustment to our agenda that I neglected to mention. We are going to move Board Policy Changes, which is item J on page 29, up right after the Consent Agenda this evening. Just FYI. So the next item on our agenda is item B on page two, and it's our Waterloo Schools Foundation Report. And I'm happily to bring Emily up front to talk a little bit more about this.
As Shanley said, my name is Emily Hansen. I am the Executive Director of the Waterloo Schools Foundation, and we are a nonprofit organization that exists solely to fund programs for the students and teachers in the Waterloo Community School District. I think it's easiest if you break down the way we fund in three different areas. The first are our innovative learning grants, which are teacher grants. The next are our Young Scholars Grants, which are grants for students who are pursuing academic interests outside of the classroom. And then final, finally, we have what are called District Initiatives. So it's something that's large scale and has the potential to impact students all across the district. This year, we have funded over how, or given away over $100,000 to the Waterloo School District. In the area of Young Scholars Grants, we awarded 11 different grants two weeks ago at our Sparking Academic Excellence Breakfast that went to 14 different teachers and was over $22,000. The Young Scholars category, we had eight different grants that benefited 42 different students across the district, and it was a little over $10,000 that we gifted. In the area of District Initiatives, we gave over $25,000 to First Robotics that benefited students at both East and West. We also did $15,000 to fund scholarships for Camp Invention in the summer. And we did over $30,000 to benefit Parent University, which is a program that's available in 10 of the 11 elementary schools that seeks to engage parents in learning outside of the classroom and kind of encourage them to take learning home with them. So we did over $30,000 there. And then the last item that we kind of helped with this year was Twice Exceptional, which is a program that helps both the special needs and the extremely gifted students in the district. We've raised over $25,000 this year to kind of help pilot that program and to start exploring it, and funded two different trips, one to Minnesota and one to Colorado. So that's kind of what we've been working on this year, and I just want to thank all of you for your support. I know quite a few of you came to our breakfast a couple weeks ago, and we really appreciated you guys coming out, and also for the great partnership that we have with you.
And just for those of you who may or may not know, both the superintendent and I are ex officio members of the Foundation Board, but the Foundation does operate, it is its own independent organization. But it is a nice, we do work and do some synergy, I'm gonna use some of those leader in me words. We synergize a lot, and it's great that they, that both the superintendent and I are at the table when we have discussions and such, so. And your group is an amazing group of committed Waterloo volunteers, so we thank all of you and the board especially for their hard work. Does anybody have any questions for Emily?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight. Then the next item on our agenda is item C on page three. It is the Hoover National Astronomy Day Celebration. And I think that we have Ms. Niebles here tonight, maybe a couple more students to tell us a little bit more about this.
Hello. I'm sure you saw first, middle of the club, lovely lady, long... Young lady, you can't tell, nervous, I bring this up.
You're fine. You're good. You're just fine.
I'm Kelsey Niebles. I teach eighth grade science at Hoover Middle School. I'm the mentor of the Hoover Astronomy Club.
Kelsey, can you turn the mic on, that little green light?
Yes.
Yes, there. Now you're live.
Teach eighth grade science here at Hoover Middle School, mentor the astronomy club. First of all, before I let Tori talk about the amazing opportunities that we have available for the public now, talk a little bit about where we came from. And a huge thanks, not only kind of to piggyback on Waterloo Schools Foundation speech, they pretty much were the impetus for us getting started. They helped us open the observatory. In addition to the Waterloo Schools Foundation, the grout has been a huge help. Members from the Black Hawk Astronomy Club, David Voits, Scott Williams, and Bob Hock have been a huge help to us, instrumental in getting us going. And also the Shirey family, too, has been donating as well, which is a huge thing. To see it not only live on its legacy, but also be able to see future generations use it. So with that being said, Hoover Middle School Astronomy Club is now well over 20 members. One of them is here, and I'm gonna let her talk about upcoming events that we have coming.
Hello, my name is Victoria Knight. I go to Hoover Middle School. I've been participating in the Hoover Astronomy Club since sixth grade, so this is my second year doing it. And Hoover is putting on a star party, which is an open event to anyone in the Waterloo Community Schools or in Waterloo in general. It's a little event that we have where we can explore the stars and learn more about them with the technology that you guys have given us. And in honor of National Astronomy Day, we are having a special star party for anyone who's welcome to come. There we will have food for sale. We're gonna have a bake sale. If the weather is permitting, we're gonna have, we're going to observe outside. And for the kids, there's going to be astronomy-related games and crafts. And we're putting this on to get the community together, and we're also doing it to celebrate National Astronomy, National Astronomy Day, and for all of us to celebrate together.
And when is that?
What day?
May 14th. Is this Saturday? Is that right?
Yeah, it's this Saturday.
And what time?
It's 2:07 to 11:00 PM.
Seven.
The H and S is before dark, and then during after dark. Crossing our fingers for peace.
Victoria, I want to put you on the spot really quick. There's also gonna be a band concert in May that is gonna have the observatory open. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's the Tuesday after.
The Tuesday, the 16th, correct? Is that right?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, yeah, Tuesday the 17th. Awesome. Because I know you're in band, too, so, thank you.
Victoria, I just want to say your presentation skills are excellent, by the way. And I also want to ask you, what, have you thought about what you, what career you want to go into?
I want to be VEP when I grow up.
Awesome.
I participate in Latin music, so I want that to be involved in what I do. And then when I grow up, I do want to help with the astronomy club.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Great information. I hope a lot of people come out on Saturday. The next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations. And before I read my statement, I'll see if there's anyone here this evening that wishes to address the board. And if so, please come forward. Alright then. Alright then, I won't waste your time with that statement, so there we go. Onto the Consent Agenda this evening, and it consists of four items. The minutes of the April 25th, 2016 regular board meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments, bills due and payable, and bills paid between board meetings, and a donation from the RJ McElroy Trust. Is there, are there any items that board members would like to have removed? Great, then seeing none, I entertain a motion to put the Consent Agenda on the floor.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Then all those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda, items D, E, F, and G, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to my little flip-flop in the agenda this evening. I'd like to bring Tara Thomas, our Director of School and Community Relations, forward. We have Board Policy Changes, and this is the second reading. It's item J on page 28, so just a little bit further back in your packet. And the recommended motion is, I just need to get to it, that the board approve the following policies: Evaluation, substitute teachers, student fines, fees, charges, student transportation, student conduct on school transportation, and video camera supervision and viewing. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. And with that, I will turn it over to Tara Thomas.
Thank you. So the only addition from what we previously reviewed is 706.3, the student transportation policy. There is the addition in the four, number four, in the middle of the page, of as determined by district personnel based on the board's input.
And just to refresh everyone's memory, at our meeting two weeks ago, we talked about this just to make that a little bit more personalized so that there was a decision, a who would be making it and how it would be made, so.
Right, exactly. To clarify that it's not black and white, because we have a lot of variance in the road conditions.
What would consider hazardous? Okay. Great. Are there any questions for Ms. Thomas? Great. Well, seeing none, then all those in favor of the Board Policy Changes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Take care. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is the scoreboard project at Memorial Stadium. This is item H, so I'm back in order now, on page 20. And I'll get that motion on the table, and I believe Dr. Willie Barney is here this evening if anybody has questions. But the recommended motion is the Board of Education award the bid to Iowa Direct Equipment an appraisal of Cedar Falls for a base bid of $154,000, I'm sorry, $154,600 for the scoreboard project at Memorial Stadium as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Great. And any discussion? I see that we had two bids. I know there was a third bid that was submitted that was not submitted properly, I believe. It was done electronically. They did not meet the specs. So... Dr. Barney, would you come up for it? Thank you.
Are there any additional costs that the district will incur? The interfaces, for example, with the timing systems, is all that part of this project?
The, the, the timing system will have, the interfaces there, it's just the timing system itself will be an additional cost at some point down the line.
But we don't...
But it's not included in this project, no.
And it won't be?
The timing system is not included in this project at this time.
So the existing timing system will be interfaced with this?
We'll need to update that timing system at some point in time, yes.
So it's not gonna be operable until we...
It is currently operable. It's not, um, it's, it's very old. I don't have a better way of sharing that.
But after this...
But it's not a part of this, the timing system is actually a different company, different venue, vendor, completely two different things.
But we'll need a new timing system before...
At some point, yes.
Before those times can be put on this scoreboard.
I believe that, I, I can't speak to whether, correct. Yes. It's old.
So how much are we committing to on the timing system?
On the timing systems, they range anywhere from $10,000 to $20,000 for the great and wondrous and high end of it. But that's not a part of this current project.
Well, it is, from a functionality standpoint.
The, we currently do not display our times up on the scoreboard.
Oh, okay. Alright.
It's, it's...
Just the scores.
Just the, where they finish up when it's all done, yeah.
But this scoreboard has the capability?
Yes.
Okay.
Once we, once we upgrade to that next system, okay.
Alright.
And is it anticipated being running, up and running this fall for the first football games?
Correct, yep. That's why the timeliness of the process as we go through. I believe we're looking at hopefully a completion date by August 5th. Our first football game is the 25th or 26th, whatever it is on that Friday.
26th, I think.
26th.
26th.
So is there anything different in operating this scoreboard compared to the existing one?
Lots of, lots more opportunities that be connected in with our student learning opportunities as well. There's a video display. Current scoreboard does not have a video display. It has opportunities for us, again, to display. The, the current board can be used for multiple sports as well, so it can be adapted to be used for a soccer scoreboard, as well as a track scoreboard. That's just the lower piece. So the, the new scoreboard actually has two components to it. I think you guys received it in your board packet. It has a video display on the upper half, and then a lower half that actually has the...
This isn't a Thursday update, this picture isn't.
Oh.
Yeah, okay. I thought it was in the original board packet that came out. But it was this picture, if you...
Yeah.
And that's got the lower half, and that can be adapted to actually run even currently the track times and places, as well as on the big board to show the video as it's going.
Is there an opportunity for advertising on the...
Yes. The advertising is currently set up with six panels on the upper portion, and then two kind of major panels on the lower portion. So we have, we will continue with some of our current supporters and then be able to seek additional supporters as well.
So we haven't locked in any...
There are some that are already locked in underneath the, an existing contract that we have, but we're looking to adjust that contract to allow more proceeds to come back into the district versus having to share the amount of proceeds we currently have to share.
So what's the range of money we would expect from a advertiser?
The advertising on those currently, we're only receiving 50% of the dollars that a company, that a company would provide for sponsorship, and that is based on what that company is currently setting up. So that is the current setup. I can't really speak to what we would do differently until that has changed.
Is there a range of how much we're talking?
We, we have, we have no control currently.
Okay.
Currently, it's whatever they arrange, we get 50% of that. We have some ideas, what we'd like to do. I'd be more than willing to share that at a different venue, but...
So on those lines, would we consider individual family sponsorships, or like booster clubs?
Money's money. I think as long as it meets the, the ethical guidelines of the district, we'd be more than willing to entertain any sponsorship and donations that would go there. We're also in the process of working on a, a donation, a charitable giving response, so what that would look like for different levels as a whole that we're planning to bring before the board as well. That would, would also tie into potentially this, but it would also go into facility donations as well as other program donations.
And then the only thing I was wondering, as far as the illumination of it, is it similar, less? You know, I know the neighbors around there often, you know, speak of the lighted board, and so is it, you know, the same kind of bulbs, illumination, no flashing?
Yeah, I don't know that the concerns come necessarily from the scoreboard. I think they just come from the stadium lights in general. The scoreboard from the, the distance, I think as you go through, you're gonna have the video pieces, obviously the sound system that's currently there. I mean, there's a number of things that obviously impact the surrounding area. But I would suggest that the, the brightness, what we're going with is the amber letter, so they kind of, they're visible, but they're not as bright and glare.
Generally, the scoreboard points to the south anyway, where it's really...
I don't think there's a lot of housing.
They're not much residential that way, anyway.
Yeah.
Feathery, but...
One other thing I, I think it's worth mentioning is that when Memorial Stadium was initially built, I think around 30 years ago or so, there was a fund established, and there's some remaining funds. I think it's about $27,000 remaining that will be put toward this project, and that the rest of this project will be coming out of our PEPAL dollars. And this is a budgeted item that we were aware that we were gonna have to have this expense. So I'm assuming our timing system will be, you know, one of those that's on up for...
Yeah, it's a part of those upgrades that, that need to come along as well. It's, I, if I speak, I think it's approximately 10-plus years old.
Okay.
We were one of, on the leading edge with that when it, when it first came out, so it was a great addition to our programming. I will say, the company that we have elected to go with did the original scoreboard that was there, and we've had great success and great support with that scoreboard. And they've also done a number of the other high schools around the state of Iowa as well. And we, we talked about earlier today one of the scoreboards and wanted to make it clear that it is the home of the, the Wahoarks and the Trojans. And so there's some great opportunities to be able to do that.
I appreciate it, kind of puts us on par to some of our, some of the high schools we're comparable to within our conference and stuff, so. I think that's huge whenever it comes to our places, they see that, you know, our facilities are as good as any facility in the MVC, so.
And I, and I guess, Lyle, to answer the, a kind of a broad piece, there are a number of districts that we've contacted that go anywhere from up to, you know, $20,000 sponsorship. Now, those sponsorships can be broken down over a five-year window. They can be broken down over a one-year window. So there's multiple options. The other thing that the board does allow is, those are kind of your marquee sponsorships that are along on the front. It allows us to be able to run some additional sponsors through the video, so you can show those as well. So the difference is they're not up there every single day for every single event, but those sponsors are, so you can get in at a little lower level. And that could be a range of, you know, a $500, $100 sponsorship, depending on what we're going through at the time, up to, you know, multiple thousands. We've got some companies that have, have already done, done a number of things with our scoreboard piece that they would just continue with us as well, because we're in a current contract with them.
And those, those can be, like the videos, would they be provided by the sponsor?
There are some programmed pieces that we can do, but there's also some that we will develop and put in as well. The images that you would, that a company would want, if there's a particular logo or, or piece, we would request that from them so that we could put it into the video and the flow as well.
So if you had, for example, a band competition there, the local suppliers of band equipment, good for that event?
Yeah, all the, the video that, the way this is set up is you can actually have a link that, that a, a, a multiple video. So especially because we have two different high schools that may have two different sponsors for their particular evening, you, you preset that up, and that can flow through, and you can have multiple ones that can flow through because this is technology. So whether it's universities, colleges, banks, credit unions, and so on, companies, those can roll through. Scroll through. Maybe I didn't hear that right.
That was a pointed comment.
So they can be customized, which is great.
Yes, it can be customized.
Perfect. We'll take money from anybody. We're not too proud, so. Alright, is there anything further for Dr. Barney?
Thanks for all the work you did on that.
Yeah, thank you. It's exciting.
And we, and like I said, we will, once we work through some existing contracts to make some adjustments with the new board, we'll have a better picture that we'll bring before you on what those will look like for our charitable contribution pieces, so.
Thanks.
Thank you guys very much.
Thanks. Great. Then all those in favor of approving the scoreboard project at Memorial Stadium, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item I on page 22. This is a technology purchase, and while Matt O'Brien is coming forward, I'm gonna go ahead and get this motion on the table. And it is the Board of Education approve the purchase of 100 Lenovo ThinkPad E560 laptops, 82 Lenovo Think Center M700 desktops, 1,268 Lenovo N22 Chromebooks with 870 cases, and 58 Apple iPods at the total cost of $408,121.30. Can I get that motion on?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And with that, Matt O'Brien, our Director of Technology, and I see Ron Moreland's here, too, so if we've got good questions... Oh, yeah, we got middle school principals back there. I can't see over all those things, so...
We have a whole crew here, yes.
Okay.
As you noted, Ron Moreland is here, our Instructional Technology Coordinator, and all four of our middle school principals are here as well. So I'll give kind of a brief high-level overview, and then we're all here to be able to answer any questions that you may have. And just congratulations on getting through the tongue twister. I know you love when I put items on the agenda and put the actual models in there, because you get... and put the actual models in there because you get to spout it out.
I read it at home today and I laughed. I was like, Matt is...
Were you rehearsing or...
Yeah, got it.
Okay. Well, as the, the board is aware, we, we look at technology as a valuable tool to enhance student engagement and student instruction. You also know that we try to look at the total cost of ownership for technology and that includes a lifecycle replacement model. So those of you that have been on the board for a little while are probably used to me coming to you in the May or June time period with a rather large purchase, which is our typical yearly budgeted purchase that then we phase in over the summer. So that's, I don't want to call this routine because it's, of course, nothing is ever routine. And tonight, we're actually doing something a little different, which is definitely not routine. But the, the kind of refresh of our technology is something that we obviously need to keep doing to ensure that we have functional technology and relevant technology to be able to be used as a tool in our classrooms. So the proposal before you tonight, I guess would say, has really three parts. There are some staff laptops for two of our elementary schools. There's also some student technology. And with student technology at the elementary levels, what I do really at any level when we're looking at technology replacement is when we're looking at a building that is due for replacements because of the age of the equipment, I always have conversation with that building leadership and, and we work together really to, to plan the best mix of devices that really makes sense within that building. And then it's ultimately up to the, the building leadership to decide how that's actually distributed within the buildings. This year, as you know, we're doing something a little bit different at the middle school level. So we had some pretty substantial conversations at the middle school level between myself and Ron from the technology standpoint, our ed services team, as well as with the middle school leadership team, and trying to look at a, a different model of distributing technology than we've done in the past. Typically in the past, what we've done is we've, for student technology, which is kind of outside of what we allocate for staff. So we have a pool of technology for staff and then for the devices which are used by students, we typically have looked at enrollment and really what we've done is had basically a roughly a, a one to three ratio, meaning one device for roughly every three students. Grants or other pieces of technology that were for special programs like Project Lead the Way, which comes from Carl Perkins Funding or other special funding sources, was always over and above that. But just kind of the general allotment of technology, we've looked at kind of a, a one to three ratio. And interestingly enough, just if you look at all of our, our technology and student technology in our buildings, the, the ratio of, of technology by the time we add all of the other devices in there as far as, you know, special funding and whatnot is actually kind of closer to a, a one and two model. And yet we, we heard frustrations from teachers of a lack of access, which was very real. And that's mainly because the, the model that we've been using just wasn't the most efficient. You know, it can lead to say a, a classroom desktop that ends up sitting idle for a number of periods a day, which obviously isn't getting a great use out of that. So we were having just kind of brainstorming conversations of if there was a, a better way to go that we could more efficiently use the same dollars, in other words, a cost-neutral proposal, to provide greater student access to, to technology to be used as a tool. And that's really where this proposal for the middle school portion, that's before you came from. What we looked at is the total cost of ownership of devices. And when I say total cost of ownership, we're not just talking the initial purchase cost. We tried to look at how much does it actually take to own this device, use it within our network over its expected lifespan? And, and really what we've determined, and this is included as a board packet. So for those of you who like math, there's a lot of math there that I won't bore everyone with, but I can take you through how that works out if, if you have any questions. Really, it works out that our, our Chromebooks that are proposed before you tonight, we're, we're able to purchase those by spending really the same amount of money that we've been doing on traditional desktops and laptops in the one to three ratio because Chromebooks, the total cost of ownership is really roughly a third of the traditional technology costs. So the proposal before you includes giving every sixth grader, not giving, loaning every sixth grader, important distinction there, a, a Chromebook, which they would have assigned to them at the beginning of the year. They would be able to take that home. Our focus this year is going to be on literacy, but obviously the student would have that device to be able to be used in, at the teacher's discretion on all of their classes. So that device is still property of the school district, but would be able to be leveraged by, by the student and they would carry that around just like they do books or anything of, of, else of that nature. So I, I want to just kind of highlight that this, this is a significant step and we're definitely not discounting that this is a significant step. And we will certainly have a large push of communication with parents about this project. But I, I also don't want us to think that this is, you know, technology should be the headline here or that this is going to be a silver bullet to, you know, mystify or, or, or just radically transform, you know, what's going on, the good work that's already going on in, in our classrooms. You know, technology really is just a tool. It's, can be a very, very valuable tool, but it is just a tool that we've been leveraging for a number of years. And really, this is just kind of a natural evolution that we're looking at to leverage it differently in a different model. And we're really viewing this as a pilot. So we're going to look and see how this model of technology distribution works next year. And then in the spring, we'll kind of take a look and see whether that made sense, whether we want to continue to replicate that across some other grade levels or whether we should have some continued conversations on maybe either different technology tools that make more sense for our environment or whether a different model of that distribution makes more sense in our environment. But again, the, the highlight here is, is really that this is a, a tool to be used in already awesome instruction. It's certainly not a, a silver bullet. So I think all of us have been very cognizant on that. And I, I really enjoy working with the team of folks behind me because I think all of us are really focused on that side of, of it being an educational instructional tool and definitely not a silver bullet. So with the educational piece, I'll let Ron speak just so, ever so briefly on kind of some, because Ron is so good at speaking.
Ever so briefly.
On the, the educational tie-in as well as the PD supports that we're looking at.
So like Matt said, we're going to focus this first-year pilot on literacy. So we're going to try to chunk this. Obviously, we believe the benefits for all the curricular areas are going, are going to be seen this year. But from a professional development standpoint, we're also going to focus in on literacy. So one of the first tools that technology brings us for that is formative, formative response tools, which is this fancy way of saying kids can get immediate feedback from their peers and their teachers with technology. And of course, the Google platform, the Google Apps for Education certainly is a landing or a starting point for that. But there's all kinds of other tools where they can get feedback instantly, maybe even take a, a survey or a quiz and have it give them immediate feedback automatically. So that's the first thing. And then we're going to focus on the four Cs. And that's kind of, you read the blogosphere of educational initiatives. And these are not necessarily technology initiatives, but communication, collaboration, critical thinking and creativity. So those four Cs are really going to find ways for kids to express themselves and, and basically show their teacher and their peers and authentic audiences. Now, for the first time ever, kids can publish to a bigger audience than just their own classroom through technology. So that's a, especially in the world of literacy, but certainly in sciences and social studies too, that's a powerful tool. So we're going to, those are going to kind of be our two focuses, formative response tools and those four Cs that we just mentioned. So for professional development, that is going to be our lens in which we deliver professional development. And so of course, summer oppor, learning opportunities are going to be where we're going to start. We're going to try to offer for-credit courses for teachers to get that continuing ed credit that they may need. But also on-ramp, especially our sixth-grade team, if at all possible, and our entire middle school team, on-ramp them into learning about the Chromebooks and about Google and about these, these initiatives. The second tool will be our Fridays that we have throughout the year. We're going to leverage that for professional development. And then at a real granular level, we're going to meet with groups of teachers on their common team time when, when at all possible to, as they're designing lessons, we want to be side-by-side with them to say, okay, every student now has an internet-capable device. How does that change how we design a lesson or a, a project, those kind of things? So that's kind of all I have for that kind of a thing. Does anybody have questions for me, Matt, or the four principals? Any of the principals have anything they'd like to add?
Yeah, I feel really bad that I didn't have you all stand up and acknowledge that you're all four here tonight. I apologize. I honestly cannot see and I've talked to two of you and I'm just so... Yay, come on. Don't be shy. Good evening.
Do you all have questions for...
I have a question for you. Does the, does the infrastructure at each of the middle schools support this?
Yeah, it does. The board actually approved some upgrades to Central recently. We actually, the, the previous year had part of that package that we've been leveraging, E-Rate Funds have redone the wireless network at Carver, excuse me, at Bunker and at Hoover. Carver, you know, is our newest middle school. It actually already had one access point for every other classroom, which is kind of our transitional model. And what we're actually going to be doing next year, just because we haven't leveraged the E-Rate Funds for Carver yet, is we'll be bolstering that to one access point from every classroom using kind of existing access points that we've taken out. So for example, the board approved new access points for Central that then kind of frees some access points into our pool that then we can redistribute to other buildings, those access points that are taken down since it's all a new model going there, which will allow us to bolster Carver, which will be more than sufficient for them and then they'll be next on the list for the following year. So actually feel really good about the infrastructure in all four of our middle schools for this.
So in the meantime, the rooms that don't have access points, can they still use the ones in the adjacent room?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, wireless access points kind of radiate, so to speak. That's probably not a, a good word because that has probably some negative connotations. But beam, beam wireless access and kind of a, yes, yes, blurry eyes and, no, it's not that. Beam wireless access in kind of a radius. So all of our access points are, I'll say, intelligent. So they automatically adjust their signal strength based off of their neighbors, the neighbor access points. So it's, it's really just kind of this auto adjustment that takes place where if there's not an access point in the next room, then the access point in the neighboring room will just increase its signal strength to be able to reach both those rooms. Our model is moving towards one per room because that's best practice and that provides the, the best connection. But, you know, we've been, we're, we're fine with just one for every other room.
I, I, first of all, I think it's a way cool initiative, wondering how sixth grade was chosen as the starting point. And then also wondering, I noticed that there's a potential of maybe a twenty-five dollar or you're working on that? As far as just feeling like with the sixth grader, because that's pretty young.
Yep.
If there's some ownership in there, if there's something put into that, that it might be better taken care of or... So just kind of thoughts from you guys on that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start off and then if any of the principals want to chime in, they certainly can. I'll actually address the, the, just kind of the ownership question first. That's actually really interesting. As we talked with other districts that have gone down similar routes and specifically districts that have gone one-to-one with Chromebooks, you kind of hit on this, Sue, that the comment has been that, of course, there's going to be damage. And like you said, particularly with sixth graders, you know, we would be naive to think that we wouldn't have to deal with some of that. So of course, we're working on policies with that. But the interesting thing is, is that the, the feedback from other districts is they've observed that kids, when they are actually assigned a device that is actually theirs, generally take more ownership, greater responsibility in that because it's their device as opposed to just, you know, utilizing a, a cart, laptop, Chromebook, whatever it is, for a period, which it's, you know, they're used for a period, but they're not really taking ownership in it. So we're certainly optimistic. We'll see something similar to what other districts have reported. But as you mentioned, we're also working on policies. What we're actually looking at, we've, we've looked at what a number of other districts have done in terms of damage policies. We're looking at a model that's similar to Council Bluffs. And what they do is have, it's optional, it's an entirely optional charge. So we, there would be no charge to parents to participate in this. You know, it's, the, the Chromebook would be kind of their standard issue. But as an optional, I don't even want to call it a, a fee because a fee implies that it's, it's, you know, a mandatory thing. But as an optional charge, parents would be able to elect to pay twenty-five dollars upfront. And it's kind of like insurance, though we're not going to call it insurance because it's a program that we're running. But it would basically go into, we call it probably cooperative loss or, or Council Bluffs have called it cooperative loss coverage. Basically goes into then a pool of money that we would use, an activity fund, similar to other activity funds that we do, to then if there was cases of accidental damage, then the first incident of accidental damage would be at a much lower cost than if the parent opted not to take that out. So the, the plan is that if there was damage, we're, we're just going to charge basically our costs for the parts. You know, our, our labor, so to speak, to actually do that is done internally. And we're actually looking at leveraging co-op students. We have two co-op students this year that we've done a lot of our repairs with. So my objective next year would be very similar, that really our techs, our kind of full-time staff, wouldn't necessarily be doing these repairs. They'd be definitely facilitating it. But the goal is if, you know, we have one or two high school co-op students that be, can be kind of specialized. This is kind of all they do is kind of that repair. That would be a, a really good experience for them and also more efficient, you know, to have someone that's specialized in that. So the labor piece, we wouldn't charge for the parts. We would charge at cost. Or if the parent opted to participate in this program, then there would still be a small copayment, but it would be much less than, you know, the twenty-five dollars that they put in. So we're still kind of looking at part costs and determining how that'll look and that'll all be communicated to parents, but that's kind of the conversations that we've had thus far.
So what happens with loss or theft, you know, that type of thing?
Yep. So basically, in, in the event of, of loss or theft, if it truly was theft as in, you know, accidental, like, you know, police report it was stolen, that type of thing, then if the parent elected to take out the policy, then they would have, you know, a small copayment that they would have. Otherwise, it would be charged the, just like any other, you know, if they lose a textbook or anything else, then we would, you know, leverage that cost in terms of the, the fees that the, the student has already leveraged, just like if they lost any other district property. Certainly we'll have, you know, these folks here would have, you know, some discretion in special cases to make adjustments if necessary. But that would be the, the general policy. Back to your sixth grade question of how sixth grade is selected, kind of a two-part answer. And I'll provide the first part and then see if anyone wants to chime in on the second part.
Before you go there, Matt, can I ask another question that has to do with the line of questioning? Yeah, loss and damage. Will the parents have an opportunity to say, I don't want my kid to bring this home because I know my sixth grader is going to break this because he has one at home already and he's already broken it? Or I absolutely do not have the funds to be able to replace this, so I'm choosing not to have this brought home? And how will that affect the instruction?
Yep. We, we've actually talked about that. Technically, parents could opt out of the program altogether. You know, right now, there's a form that parents can, we typically issue, you know, email accounts, network accounts, et cetera. Parents can opt out of technology use altogether. We really have only had, you know, this year we, I'll give you one example. We had one parent who was upset about a particular situation after some conversations with that parent of, of really what those ramifications would mean of having no access to technology. The parent was able to see that maybe there's some better ways to go about that. So as far as the entire technology kind of backing away from it, that's an option. Certainly, we'd be having conversations with parents that were concerned about that, just so they understood the ramifications. The kind of more, the, the other option that you mentioned was the, I don't want my student to take it home. I want them to leverage it at school, but not actually take it home. We've talked about that as well and, and that'll definitely be an option. Parents obviously will need to communicate that and that'll be part of the communication that we have with parents, both between the form that will be going home, that, you know, will be kind of the contract parents have to sign as part of getting this, as well as communication we'll be doing at open houses and whatnot. So it will be an option. The buildings will kind of work through procedures of how that'll look. In some cases, I know we've talked about, maybe there's a spare Chromebook per classroom that the student's just leveraging. In other cases, we've been talking about what it would look like in, in that type of situation where the student maybe checks it out in the morning and then checks it back in during, you know, after school. So we're looking at kind of both of those. It's really going to be up to these folks at the building to decide how that logistically would work better for those parents that want that. But certainly would, would provide either option for parents and, and just talk through kind of the ramifications of both of those options.
So what kind of shrinkage has experienced by other school districts in terms of lost and beyond repair?
What, I'm sorry?
What kind of shrinkage, lost and beyond repair?
We have heard from other districts that the loss... We have heard from other districts that the loss percentage has been, as far as total loss, in other words, not just a part like an LCD that needs to be repaired, or a keyboard that needs to replace, replace, that type of thing. Total loss has been really, really small. I think Council Bluffs, they're, they're one-to-one, basically with Chromebooks, I think from third through 12th grade, take them home at really the secondary level. I think they start taking them home at fifth grade. They have, you know, at most, a dozen a year, that's a total loss, and again, that's across, they're similar sized district, but we're talking about, you know, multiple grade levels there. So, we're certainly not naive to know that, to think that's not going to happen, but it also isn't as bad. That's really been the consistent remark from districts, is it's not as bad as you think it's going to be. Yes, it's a problem, you need to have procedures to deal with it, but it's not as bad as you may fear.
So, do they have a locate my computer feature?
They, Chromebooks don't. Tablets, tablets like iPads do, and, you know, between GPS and the, just the internet service, they have those options. Chromebooks don't natively have that. There's some services that you can provide that are at an additional cost that were to have that functionality. We've kind of looked at that, and it doesn't really seem to be cost-effective based off of the loss that we're expecting. In other words, we'd spend a lot more money having this additional functionality compared to the money that we'd actually leverage from this. Just to give a, a similar analogy, we, we, this was actually before I was even in this position, but my predecessor in this position, when they first rolled out laptops for teachers, they invested a pretty significant amount of money in a similar program to that, that is kind of a locate my device thing, I think it was like $50 device, something like that. And I think in that time, we had three thefts of devices that that program was actually running on, and that program was not able to recover any of the three of those. So, you know, it's something that you have to kind of weigh the, the cost versus the loss that you're expecting, and, and it's something, again, this is kind of a pilot, so we'll definitely be looking at that. Our plans at this time isn't to leverage that, but we'll certainly be looking at that, you know, for potential expansions, depending on what the first year teaches us.
Are the ones at the elementary, you're proposing erase units that will stay at the elementary then?
Yes, sir. The only, the only units that we're talking about checking out is for our middle school. So, there's a number of other student technology proposals that are refreshes for our elementary. I don't want to say that status quo, because in all cases, we're not replacing the same computer with like, just a desktop for a desktop, or laptop for a laptop, you know, there's different devices going in, but all of those devices, that model's going to be staying the same that they actually stay within the building.
Can we get back to the sixth grade?
Circle back, okay. You all are sick of hearing me, so I'll, I'll give the short answer, and then someone else can talk. Sixth grade, really, twofold. We started having conversations knowing that this is year one, that then we're going to have to review the data and see where we go from here. So, quite honestly, with that parameter in place, looking down the road at how this potentially would expand down the road, it made sense to start with either sixth or seventh grade, simply because that makes replicating it the following year, if we do decide to expand this, say, against the next grade level, much easier, because students wouldn't be transitioning buildings. So, eighth grade, you know, that would be a, a challenge to then go to high school, and then that's a big cliff to jump off of, you know, to move forward, because really, you start getting a lot of mixed classes, and it would be difficult to just do a particular grade level. So, it made sense to do either sixth or seventh grade, so with that, then it was really a unanimous consensus with our, our principals that, that sixth grade seemed to be the best choice. I don't know if any of you want to chime in as to why?
I think when Ron was talking about the professional development piece, I know, at least for my thinking, my sixth grade team was really ready for that, and they're really, they would be primed to be able to really absorb all that professional development and truly grasp where we want to go with it. So, I think that was one piece.
And the other piece in terms of a pilot, starting with sixth grade, allows us to have multi-year data, and these devices could potentially travel through seventh and eighth grade with these students, and that would allow three years of really rich data in terms of what's working, what's not working, how in fact it did impact instruction. So, I think that was one of the main reasons why we chose sixth grade.
As you look at impact, you want to start at the earliest level, because we want to see the greatest impact. Obviously, everything we're pushing towards is proficiency rates, and then also graduation. And so, the earlier we can start that and make a bigger impact, i- is really imperative. You know, it, it makes sense to start in eighth grade, because obviously, that's a federal reporting year for us, but really, if we're preparing for eighth grade by starting in sixth grade, if that makes sense. And then also, as sixth graders come in, they're new, they're, they're flexible, they, they love to please. The care and ownership comes back to the behaviors we teach, so it's going to go back to what our staff reinforces, and the expectations. You get what you tolerate. So, when we set the expectation, "This is your device, you need to care for it as your own," that, that's an important thing. That's easier to teach to a sixth grader who's new than an eighth grader who's king of the mountain in spring, you know, spring this year. And so, that's really imperative for us. So, we, we felt like sixth grade would be the greatest place to build the ownership, and also see the biggest impact.
Yeah, for, for me as well, it was being able to put that device in those sixth graders' hands, because they're excited to enter middle school. You're going to get a lot of data from them over the next three years, and it was, just made sense. Our team was ready for it, our sixth grade team was already really excited for it, they'd been applying for grants to try to do this ahead of time, before this even began. So, it was exciting for them to have this opportunity to be able to bring it to Carver.
So, so what's the Google Apps feature? What's the functionality, what does that allow?
Okay, so I'll just give you the real thing. I go into a classroom, and it's awesome, because there's 28 kids, and they all have a lab that they've checked out, and they're all typing on their papers, and the teacher can sit there, and they share their paper through the computer, and the teacher just pops it open and makes these little comments, immediate, right in the moment, and the student's going, "Wow, that's awesome, I need to make that change." And the teacher can actually chat with the kid right in the moment, times 26 students for immediate feedback. So, writing workshop just went from, "Let's sit down, and let's talk about this paper," to like, really neat, interactive, immediate feedback for the kids, so.
And the other piece too, the other piece too, is I think it's the case for all four schools, our sixth graders are using Chromebooks nearly every day now, and they're quite used to them, and I think it'll be something they'll easily adapt to.
I think the thing I want to reiterate is this is not an equipment purchase, it is a, it is an initiative for instruction, and that, that's huge for us, because, you know, I'll, I'll look at our sixth grade team right now, we're sharing about 60 Chromebooks among 300 kids at this point, and what we're able to see now, you know, we look at adult behaviors, this have incredible adult behaviors, what they're doing, adapting that, using cloud computing, and, and doing these amazing things that are preparing them for employment, quite honestly. But beyond that, that, you know, add this extra tool to improve instruction is just going to be fantastic. We have to, we have to wrap our heads around that, as technology literate as our kids are, they're very technology illiterate at the same time, because we are thumbs now. We have kids that don't know how to type. We have kids that don't know how to effectively utilize a search engine, and don't know the idea of what a credible source is, like Wikipedia doesn't count, guys, you can't go and cite that in a, in a study, that's not going to cut it at John here, it's not going to cut it at Veridian. And so, giving kids these tools now to see that and, and give better, I'll give a shout out to, you know, the board. So, get, you know, we are not, you know, I, I, as I talk with Tom Pennaluna, you know, employability skills, you know, he, we have to have people that are ready now, and I, this is just going to be a fantastic tool, and having students have a better understanding of what they need to do to be ready, because they're not going to be able to do drafting on their cellphone, they're not going to be able to do some of these, these skills they need to have. So, I, I think it's going to be a real shot in our arm in terms of our instructional pedagogy.
Quick question. Internet access and filtering at home. I don't know if I missed that, Matt, but just quickly, if you can answer that.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. So, I'll kind of two-point question with that. With the internet access piece, we're working right now on a technology that will allow us to still filter those at home. Basically, what we're working on is, even if the device is used outside of our network, then that traffic, that internet traffic will still kind of funnel back to our network, just so the point that it can be then filtered, and then go out to the internet from there, so that piece we're working on. As far as internet access at home, kind of a two-pronged answer there. The, the first is that we, we're very cognizant that we have a, a very real digital divide. We have a, a number of, of houses that don't have internet access, or they maybe have internet access, but it's, you know, I think some of our surveys are a little misleading, because, yes, I have internet access while it's, you know, my cellphone or something like that, which is, as Mike said, really isn't, you know, necessarily the same as actually having an actual device that can create content, that type of thing. So, we, we are totally aware of that. That's actually been an interesting point, as we've talked to other districts that have gone through this, I, I will actually go back to Council Bluffs, mainly because their demographics in, in terms of socioeconomic status is very, very similar to ours, similar size. Really, what they've, what they're, and talking to their director of technology and, and some of their staff, they said, "The kids have just really figured it out as far as getting access." Now, that's not to say that we're being completely naive, and, and just saying, "Here, have a device, go figure it out," type of thing, but they've said that that's something that they really thought was going to be a, a really big deal to start with, and it didn't turn into being that much of a barrier. I'm actually a, a little, just kind of hesitant, or a little skeptical of that, and we've had some conversations around that as well. What we'll probably look at doing is providing a directory of, you know, where in the community is there free wireless access, and in terms of Panera, the Water Public Library, you know, those type of places. We've talked about potentially having school buildings open, you know, a certain night for like, an open house, or a study night library open, that type of thing. So, we're, we're talking about kind of some strategies around that. The second part to that answer, and I'm optimistic that we'll be able to return to the board with this, is that we've actually applied for a grant that will allow us to provide some internet service to students at home, and I'll tell you that we've had kind of some initial interviews with that, that have looked very promising, so I'm optimistic that we'll maybe have another announcement that we'll be able to bring to the board in, in the coming weeks, and that obviously isn't going to provide access to all of our students, but we're hoping that, you know, we would be able to get grants for enough to maybe look at providing some access to those most in need. So, stay tuned for hopefully some more information coming up.
What percent of our households have, what percent of the students have access to internet at home?
I, I think I've, I've seen in surveys, it's been a couple of years since we pulled this, I want to say it was somewhere around the, the 75% area, but I will also say that I'm slight, honestly, slightly skeptical with that, just because that's internet access, that doesn't mean, you know, they actually have a computer or wireless access, you know, may just be a, a cellphone with a data plan, that type of thing as well. So, it, it's actually, it's, it's decent, but certainly not where we'd like to see it.
So, will you principals end up with that information on your sixth graders? Will you know who, who has access at home and who doesn't?
Something that we, very briefly, our last meeting talked about, the AEA offers a free tool called Clarity, and they've been hounding us to do this as a district, we were one of the last holdouts, just because we survey our folks a lot. But it really does provide, I've seen some of the reports, and it's this data that you're talking about, you know, they survey students, so that's probably one of the first things we'll do as a, "Hey, you have your new Chromebook, fill out this survey," which will give us some baseline, and then it also surveys teachers as well. And then somewhere down the line, they have a third prong, which is surveying parents, but I think we're going to just start with those first two.
And also, just FYI, MediaCom does have low-income internet access, so as a district, we might want to look at that and offering that to parents, and also tie it into our parent university as well.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, and actually, MediaCom, CenturyLink, AT&amp;T, they all have programs where qualified family can basically get subsidized or lower than market cost internet service, so we'll definitely be figuring out that's, thank you for mentioning that, because that's a good point, a, a way to communicate those options. The grant we applied for would end up being at, at no cost to parents, because we know sometimes even if it's subsidized to, a lot of those programs that were mentioned are $10 or $20 a month, which obviously is a significant subsidized cost, but is still a burden to some of our families, so we're, we're trying to look at options there.
What about censorship and blocked access to?
The filtering.
Oh, oh, okay, sorry.
Well, you can answer again.
Yeah, that, that was the piece, really, it would be the same level of access that students would have inside of our network, because we're, we're working on the ability to filter their access, just like they would be on our network in school, outside of school. I will say, just kind of as a general rule, you brought up censorship and block access. I'm going to almost say that's a little two different things, because obviously, we're, we're required by law to block access to certain materials, pornographic, et cetera, which, which of course we do. We've really tried to move towards not over-blocking, and that's not to say that sometimes we don't block something that we don't need to block, like Facebook is still blocked, for example. But we try to err on the side of having it open as opposed to blocked, and then really, the important piece with this is, is going to be the digital citizenship, which you've heard brought up several times as well, which obviously, we, we can use this as an opportunity to teach students some of those skills that, that some of them are, are very much lacking, so that's an opportunity, I think.
This Google man, uh, management license, is that comprehensive, or is that just for the literacy app?
That, so that's actually, I would say, is a management or a more technical tool. It allows us basically to inventory the devices, to push out settings, to be able to join that to kind of our Google domain, so that students can log on with their accounts that were issued, so it's not, I think you're kind of thinking of a learning management system, which is more content delivery. That's not what that component is, it's more of a, a management's piece that we need to have, just like when we buy a Windows computer, there's certain licenses that we have to have to get it to run appropriately in our environment, that's really what that license is for.
So, I was just extrapolating the cost here, so if you have, say, 40 bucks a year per student, times 5,000 students, if you go from 612, that's $200,000 a year, but over half that cost is this license?
Over half, no, it's, so it's, the Chromebook itself is one, the, the license is a one-time fee, so.
Oh.
The Chromebook is $1.67, the license, I think, is $26, but both of those are a one-time fee. That's actually a big advantage with Google, as opposed to some of the Microsoft licensing, where Microsoft, we do have to pay for a time period. Google, it's a lifetime device license, so as long as that particular device is in use, we can't transfer it to another device, but we don't have to pay that every year.
Okay, so, so it's going to cost $200,000 a year, roughly?
For, for a grade level, yeah.
For, no, for the whole, your, your cost per year is $40 per student?
Yeah, it's correct. The, the challenge, the challenge that I kind of noted in the board documents as well is the lifespan of these devices, they're new enough that we don't really know what to divide that out of, so that's why I expressed it by both the four and the five year, but yes, assuming, you know, I think that was the math that I had for the, what, the four-year span?
Five years.
For the five year, so assuming the five year, then.
The four years, 52.
Yep, yep, thank you, Shanley.
So, that's, so that's a sustainable, long-term cost?
Yeah, it, it is. Really, that's similar to what we've been spending anyway, from our budgeted Pepple dollars for our standard technology, and that's kind of what I try, I, I expressed it differently here, because I was comparing basically the, the cost of ownership and showing how it's a third of the cost of a laptop or desktop, but remember, our model traditionally has been a one-to-three ratio, so if we've got, you know, a one-to-three ratio that we've budgeted from Pepple dollars in the past, and we're moving to a device that's one-third of the cost, but three times as many devices, basically, the math makes it cost-neutral for, for the long term. You, you're, you're doing the math just the, a different way, but it would work out being the same, that's just the way I expressed it.
Not sure you can add 5,000 computers and not add to cost?
What, what cost do you think, just kind of looking at the total cost of break, of ownership breakdown, what, what cost do you think we haven't included?
I think you have included it, but to offset it, to say it's already offset, I'm not sure I understand that, but I don't, I don't need to. So, whatever the cost is, say it's $200,000 a year, what is the learning, how, how much are your test scores going to go up? And each principal, each principal can add, answer that separately.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I kind of noted this as well, and I'll let, you know, some of the edu, the fine educational folks surrounding the answer as well. It, it's interesting where we've, we've done this, a, a similar volume of purchase in the past, and, and honestly, that question has never been asked, and I'm not trying to say that that's not a good question, because it's absolutely the right question, but it also kind of makes it seem like our initiative is a technology initiative, and all we need to do is spend X dollars on technology, and then all of a sudden, our test scores magically go up. And what research has told us, and what we know, and what all of us here have, have said is really, technology is just the tool, it's a component to be used in instruction, just, just like the pencil, just like the old overhead projector, you know, it's, it's almost becoming an expectation of just access to a device that's needed, you know? We don't ask that question when we- We don't ask that question when we purchase textbooks, or overhead projectors, or something with that, it's just becoming kind of a natural expectation that it's actually needed as a tool. That said, obviously, we are very much going to be looking at, you know, achievement data. This is a major change, and we're, we're not naive to that. We, we will certainly look at both achievement data, as well as Ron mentioned, the Clarity tool, that'll allow us to gather quite a bit of perception data. But, I, I don't know that we're going to be able to really look at test scores in isolation, and say, any achievement in test scores that happened at sixth-grade level solely because we invested this amount of money in technology, and, you know, equate, divide that out to find what our bang for the buck was, just because we have so many other great instructional initiatives happening, that this technology is, is just a tool to, to better enable that great instruction that's happening.
But, there's hundreds of schools that have been one-to-one for years. And assuming that they're, that you're using it the same way they are, I'm not sure that that's the case, but if it is, there must be some evidence. If, if there's no evidence of any improvement, then why would we do it?
The, the evidence shows that it's only as effective as the resources that are put behind it, in other words, it's only as effective as the, the professional development that the teachers are given to effectively integrate that, and it's only as effective as the other instructional strategies that are being shown. So, quite honestly, and I'm, I'm, I'm not quoting a specific study, because I've, I've seen dozens of them, but that's the consistent thing that you will find across the board, is that there are some one-to-one initiatives that have had no impact on test scores, and I think if you drill down on those, it's because the focus was on technology, and not on actually utilizing technology as a tool, not in, you know, providing teachers with the, the supports they need to actually effectively instruct, not utilizing as a tool. There's also a number of studies that have shown significant in, improvement in test scores, but again, all of those studies cited the, the other efforts that were going on in the particular district at the time, in supporting teachers and supporting instruction. So, it's difficult to ju, I, I could, I could pick a study that showed a, a dramatic increase in student achievement, if, if that would make us feel all better, but, but that, that really wouldn't be fair, because that's only a, a portion of, of, of the, the puzzle. The, the, the point is that technology is, is the tool that allows teachers to just use some different instructional strategies, but as a loan, technology is not going to increase test scores, it's opening the doors to allow teachers to use different instructional strategies, which should have an impact on student engagement and student achievement.
Matt, I just want to acknowledge you guys and this whole team for, for bringing this to us, because I think that everything that you're doing with this sixth-grade thing is, has had all students in mind. I mean, anticipating the digital divide, looking at ways to opt-in and opt-out, I mean, I just, I want to acknowledge you for, for this well-thought-out plan, and I do see it as being, it's only going to be beneficial to the kids, there's no, there's no negative side to giving them this opportunity at this early of an age.
And I also want to say thank you, because I know when pedagogy and instructional technology collide, but I, I feel confident in your ability, and I know as, as building leaders, you've already, you know, looked into, to all of that. And Matt, you know, you're, you're one of my favorite people, because I learn so much every time you come here. Because if you could break it down, I mean, in a way that I can understand, I appreciate that. So, I just want to say thank you, and I'm excited about this endeavor. Thank you all very much.
And I was very excited to see those carrying cases. I mean, because I look at the, you know, cellphones, and, you know, to have a case is hugely important, because one drop isn't going to shatter or really hurt it, so that was a good forethought, too. And I just think the empowerment of the kids, too, to say, this is mine, and the world in front of them right here, you know? But, as Lyle, I was thinking about you saying this, and the data results, and I'm like, what about a brand-new John Deere mower, you know, in the yard? But, it isn't going to produce results unless you water your lawn.
But, there has to be an expectation of improvement. If there's not, then we shouldn't be doing it.
I guess I'd just say this, I love this town, I love the school district. My wife and I chose to move here. And the reason we chose to move here, because when we walked through the buildings, the teaching and learning, there are just no better teachers in this country than the people who are working in Waterloo right now. And I see that every day. And I know what will move test scores, and that is access to a highly rigorous core curriculum, and a highly differentiated curriculum, where we can individualize learning.
Right.
That's what this is going to do. It's going to be a tool to allow that, to allow better access for our teachers. It's giving, it's like a, it's like a fireman saying, I don't need a two-inch line, I need a four-inch line, we're about to give a four-inch line. And so, that's going to boost proficiency scores, which will boost eleven credits as a freshman, which will get more kids graduating, which we're eighty percent right now, right? Woo-hoo. And, and we're, we're really excited about that. I mean, I, I was so excited about that, I, this is kind of how big a nerd I am, but I was texting Charles McNulty about correlations and studies and causation about with eighth graders and credits on Sunday afternoon while I was walking my wife on Mother's Day, but that's how excited I am, because that's what we're doing here. So, so I guess, Lyle, to answer your question, you know, i, the correlation causation, but I, I do know that we're going to give some of the best educators in the world, and a more powerful tool, to offer highly rigorous core instruction, and highly differentiated instruction.
And I would just add to that really quick as well, that's one of the benefits, I think, of starting this in sixth grade. We will now technically have three years to gain some really rich data, and to drill down and see exactly what is working and what is not working. We're hard-pressed to find any real big movement on any initiative in one year. These things really do take two to three years to shake out, and so I do believe we're going to see movement. And the one thing that I think that the Chromebooks do, is they allow the teachers more ability to synthesize and apply all of the content that the kids are learning. And that in itself provides for a more rich educational experience. And I think we, we will see the results, we will see positive results, whether they be in test scores, whether they see in, you know, a reduction in dropouts, or, you know, kids moving into post-secondary education, or finding their career. I definitely do believe that we will see positive results over the three-year term, and learn and see what we need to change to bring up the next group.
Do you, do you think from a teacher's standpoint, it's more work, less work, or about the same?
They're using them now, and they fight over them.
Okay.
They literally fight over them.
That, that really is kind of the cool thing to me about this, is I would call this really grassroots, you know, it was mentioned earlier that a number of our sixth-grade teachers applied for, for grants, either through the foundation, or I've had a lot of interest. This really, we know this is the right thing, and then that's really been solidified by the teacher feedback that we've, we've gotten, that they're really asking for more access. So, this basically is just allowing us to give teachers more access without spending any more money.
Well, clearly, we're not without questions up here. So, I hope that all of you, the charges, we all care about this, we're obviously invested, all of us in it, but I hope that you'll give us some feedback, and let us know, you know, what's going on and how things are going. And I just have to say, I have a seventh grader that's at Hoover, and I know Victoria's back there, too, and I bet you a hundred bucks, you guys use Google Docs all the time, and share stuff back and forth, and projects, she's like, yeah, don't you?
She's doing it right now.
Yeah, I bet she is. And it really does help. I, I have found it with the difference between my seventh grader, and my sophomore, and my son that's graduated, and the ability for them to do the sharing of documents and such, it's, it's really changed the way that they are engaged, and their instruction is delivered. So, in my house, anyway, it's been a nice thing to have that Chromebook, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, all of you, for your time, we really appreciate it. So, with that, all those in favor of approving the technology purchase, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That's the end of our action items for this evening, so that moves us then on to the superintendent's report.
And I only have one thing, and it is just to wish you a national, or a happy National Board Appreciation Week. And I just think it is, it, just, just give me two seconds to make comments, but I, for anybody watching this, I don't know if, if they know what a school board member does, and I don't think you really actually, anybody can know until you've done it, would be my guess. But, you know, they're, they're charged with setting policy and direction for this district, but it is so much more than that. It is, I, I, I just wrote down some words, you know, it's, it's about pushing, driving, monitoring, supporting, guiding, participating, and being the biggest cheerleaders that we have to, to support the students of Waterloo schools. And so, I just want to absolutely thank them for their hours, and hours, and hours of work, and the, the insight that they bring, we are better because they are here, without a doubt. They, we are better because of their questions, because of their ideas, their suggestions, their, their guiding, and I, I thank you from the, the bottom of my heart. I think that it is a privilege to work with and for you. So, with that, have a, have a happy Board Appreciation Week, and we're having lunch tomorrow, so I think that'll be fun. And I would like to challenge you, when you do your little update, would you please tell me one word that would describe your experience on the board? For those of you who've been on nine months, and for those of you who have been on more than nine months. What, if you could sum it up in one word, what would you say about your experience? I think it's a fun activity, so go ahead, go ahead.
No, I'm just thinking, I was like, this caught us off-guard, normally we get this ahead of time.
Well, you know, it's, it's okay. You can think on your feet.
Right. All right, Jesse, start us off.
Enlightening.
Ah, I like it. Like it.
And if you have an update, too, you can do your updated, mention to your word, but...
Yeah, and I would say, I was on vacation, I've been using a lot of vacation this last couple of weeks, because I had missed my spring break. But, I've had a chance to do three of my school visits with East, Kingsley, and Lincoln the last few weeks, and by natural habit, I end up at, I was at West for something else, and Hoover for something else, and Lewitt for something else. But, you know, the great thing, going to these facilities, you see great teachers in there, you see kids engaged. I was at Lincoln, watching these kids do amazing things in math and science, that it's just, as a, on a higher level, just watch them learn, and, you know, administrators are always, are always nice when I came in, and, and just, it's a great school system for our kids to be in, so.
Thanks, Jesse. Okay, Angie.
I'm going to go with engagement, because it goes along with my update, because I wasn't going to give one, but at the same time, Friday, I, I got the opportunity to go to the YMCA's annual fundraising dinner, they have, and, and I get to go to a lot of those because of the nature of what my job is. And at each of those things, I get to see different teachers and administrators who want to give back to not just their schools, but to the community that we're in. I mean, for a perfect example, she bought that at a, at a thing, and is donating it back to the school, and she and her husband are at a lot of those types of fundraising events, because the community is that important to them. So, that's my acknowledgement to teachers, administrators, and people who are, live and work in our community, it's engaging.
I like it. All right, Sue.
Glad I'm not Lyle.
It's going to be me, it's going to be me up here without the last word.
I know. I would say educational. Just in learning, I didn't know that much, but I, I learn every day, I learn of the opportunities, I learn about things, how to do things, and I just think it has been extremely educa, I've learned how to deal with people, I've learned how to deal with address code, I've, it's been very educational, so I appreciate that. And also, I was going to say opportunistic, but I just think it's awesome that we, our district takes initiatives, I mean, obviously Chromebook initiative's been around forever, but gives the kids a chance to participate in things that aren't traditional. And I just appreciate that, that if, like, the gal came and talked about a sewing club, that, you know, if, if you find a sponsor, you can have a sewing club, and that we don't have limits on anything that we offer our kids. And so, I just, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the opportunity to learn, as I do this every day.
Hey, Rhonda.
I would say edifying, because, you know, and, because enlightening was my first choice. No, but when I said Matt was one of my favorite people, I, I, I don't give out gratuitous compliments, but this whole process as a board member has been very edifying, because I've learned so much about instructional technology, and I'm a counselor by trade. I've learned about budgeting, and, you know, financial formulas for, you know, funding a school district. And so, I've learned so much more about pedagogy, and, you know, outputs and outcomes when it comes to, you know, the, the instructional technology and what we get from it. So, this has been a very edifying journey for me, and I, and I just started. That first school board workshop, literally two-day workshop on learning how districts are funded, was difficult, but I'm learning. And, so finally, I want to give a, a shout-out to our superintendent and our school building leaders on our graduation rates, that's a very big deal to me, and that's very awesome. And I'm looking forward to where Waterloo is headed, so I just want to say thank you to everybody.
Okay, you were chicken scratch, I saw it.
I would say discerning. You know, when you're talking to an individual, particularly one that's complaining about something, you have to discern the level of passion, which is usually pretty easy. But then you need also discern the nugget of truth in there somewhere, or the wisdom in there somewhere, you know, so that becomes actionable information. Kind of like I was, and I believe, you know, I think that the Chromebooks are definitely the right thing to do. But what I was trying to discern was, how much of that complete package you're talking about, other than the hardware and the software existed? And what was the buy-in and the commitment? And I was very pleased at, at the answer, it may not seem so, but, 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 but really trying to discern, what, what's the total picture here? And that, and that, so I think discerning is...
That's a great one. All right, he left me with scraps, I don't have an E. I'm just going to say rewarding. Again, as Lyle said, you do have to discern, and I think, Sue, it was you who talked about all the stuff you, you've learned. I like to consider myself a lifelong learner, and so personally, this job has been more, job, volunteer commitment, has been more rewarding than I might have expected. Yes, we hear some bad, but we also hear some good, and, you know, Dr. Lindeman, thank you for your kind words about all of us, but I don't think any one of us would sit up here if it wasn't rewarding, and if we didn't get something out of it, too. We're all very passionate about education, we bring different viewpoints and different values to the table, but in the end, we all care about kids. And so, I'm, it's rewarding to me to be in any one of our nineteen buildings, because we are doing great stuff, so. And with that, I'm going to just say that I'm excited for our Board Appreciation Luncheon tomorrow, and our next meeting will be right back here in two weeks, on May twenty-third at six PM. And if there's anything, not anything further, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned, yay, thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
I always feel like I have to go through the...